I'm not going to do that. Oops. All right, well.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kayla Eisen, Senior Communications Coordinator with the City of Edina. Thank you for coming to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. If you have not already done so, please silence your cellphones. The Council Chambers is equipped with a hearing assistance system. If you'd like to borrow a receiver, please let me know. If you'd like to address the Commission regarding an agenda item, please do so when or if the Chair asks for public testimony, depending on the item. If you'd like to raise an issue not on the agenda, you may do so during the community comment portion of the agenda. During public hearings, the Chair will ask for community comment after city staff members and proponents make their presentation. When addressing the Commission, please stand at one of the two podiums on either side of the dais. Stand at the document table right here, only if you have visual materials to present. And I'll hand you a wireless microphone like the one I'm holding. Before beginning your remarks, please clearly state your full name, first and last, and including an apartment or unit number if you live in a condo or apartment. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Edina TV, Channel 16 and 813, for Comcast subscribers, and Channels 1236 for CenturyLink subscribers. You can also view the video online at our website, edinamn.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, welcome to the May 24 Planning Commission meeting. Tonight, we have one item on the agenda. It's a sketch plan review. But before we have that, I'd like Jackie to call, roll call?
Commissioner House.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
President.
Commissioner Sprouse.
Here.
Commissioner Smiak.
Here.
Commissioner Kent Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Nevaroff.
Here.
Commissioner Hamper.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Ruby.
Chair Holson.
Here. Thank you, Jackie. So the first item is to approve the minutes from the May 10 Planning Commission. Were there -- oh, sorry, I'm skipping the approval of the agenda. So do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Now we'll move to the minutes. Were there any edits to the May 10 Planning Commission minutes? Anyone have any changes?
I move to approve the minutes as circulated.
Thank you.
My second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. The next item on the agenda is community comment, and this is when anyone from the community can come up and speak on an item, but the one caveat is that it cannot be an item that's on the agenda. So if you have comments on the sketch plan for the Astell Edina, that can't be part of the community comment. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss, community comment? Seeing none?
I move to close public comment.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so now we go into the sketch plan review for the 69th and France redevelopment, the Astell Edina. And as a sketch plan, this isn't a public hearing, so again, it's -- it will just be staff report, the developer presenting, and then Planning Commission making comments, but we do not open it up for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This sketch plan, that's before you, again, this is where the Planning Commission and City Council get a chance to review an application prior to a formal agenda, provide the developer with comments and feedback should they want to pursue that development further with a formal application. It would be at that time at a formal application where a public hearing would be held. So this -- oops, wrong clicker. The site that we're looking at today is in the Southdale area. It's in between 69th and 70th and France. So to orient you here, this is France Avenue. You can see the Water Tower. So it's this block on the west side of France. The first phase of the development includes these three parcels, the two banks and the Galleria Office Building. So the site is currently zoned planned commercial district, PCD III, which is the same zoning as Southdale. The corner piece is zoned planned office district where the bank exists, and the Vitamin Shop is the area highlighted in purple here. That has a PUD zoning. The majority of the site is PCD III. The site has a height overlay district in our zoning ordinance that limits the height in this area on all of these sites to four stories and 48 feet. The site is guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential. That's this OR designation. So it's this pink area here. Our comprehensive plan, as we've discussed in the past, is unique as we do have height limitations. This site is guided for four stories. Council recently amended the comprehensive plan to allow eight stories to the north. So this is the pyramid that we always look at when we're looking at a redevelopment project. It's the pyramid of discretion for a city. So with this project, a zoning ordinance amendment is requested and a comprehensive plan amendment, so the city has complete discretion as to whether to approve or deny this project. So the applicant started out, in looking at this site, started with our Southdale visioning document, and they've done a nice job in site planning and following some of the guiding principles. So this is the site on the west side of France, so here's France Avenue. One of the primary principles is dividing bigger parcels into blocks, into 200 by 200 square blocks. We've talked a lot about that in the vision process, and they are doing that with pedestrian and roadway connections that would divide the site into four smaller blocks. Again, here's another page from that document. The area highlighted in yellow, we've talked about a residential mixed use with an emphasis of housing on at least half of the site to provide that buffer to the residential area to the west. This is a graphic that talked about development intensity. This site is designated as a transitional zone from, again, that residential area to the west, to the more intense on the inside of France in York. So that's one of the issues that I would ask the Planning Commission to discuss as you're providing feedback and comment. Is this proposal a transitional site? We don't define height specifically in that document, just the comprehensive plan. So here's a couple of other renderings of as the site exists today. You can see the two banks and the office building. So what the applicant is proposing here is 158 total condominium units. It would include two residential towers, one here, one here, with six townhomes. And I won't get into the detail. I'll let the applicant describe the detail of the project, and they also have a 3D rendering, a model, where they'll fly around the site in virtual. So this demonstrates how the project would be divided up into those blocks. This north-south would be in kind of a Woonorf shared street pedestrian way, and the same would go for the east-west connection. So here, you can see that on the first level of the north tower and the south would be retail. There's about 15,000 square feet would be a combination of restaurants, and the two existing banks would relocate into the development. Here, you can see a series of six townhomes, three-story townhomes, to, again, provide that stepping into the single-family development to the west. They took a look at our basic principle of having a 30-foot setback from the edge of a roadway on 69th or Valley View, and 50 feet on France. In this case, they're proposing 40, so it's not quite our 50 feet, but given the dividing the site into blocks with that pedestrian and roadway, kind of limits the footprint of the site. So they're proposing 40-foot of green space and sidewalk from the edge. Want to note that the Vitamin Shoppe that was recently built within the last few years, that has about a 25-foot setbacks, were somewhat limited right off the bat on this block with that new development. So just to quickly show you some renderings, and again, the applicant will go into more detail on this, but this would be the entryway off of France on the corner, 69th and France, right at the intersection. So you can see they're proposing very pedestrian-friendly, a lot of space in between the building and the street, significant landscaping. This would be the motor court or the Woonorf looking north toward Bank of America. You can see the townhomes on the left side. This is a view from 69th into the Woonorf, and then along 69th as you would move toward France. So this would be the look of the building essentially from the south and west. So the primary issue here is in regard to the height. So the height of the building is 360 feet tall. That's the north tower. To give you a little perspective of some of the heights in the area, the Water Tower here is 210 feet tall. The Westin is also 210. Here's another look to the west down 69th. So you can see the buildings are somewhat slender in nature, some of our existing taller buildings, and we'll take a look at some slides in a minute, are quite expansive, where these would be slender, more slender buildings. Another perspective that shows the 24-story tower, the Water Tower, again, this is actually 210 feet, the Westin at 210. So as with all of our development requests where they're proposing a PUD, we start with the base zoning and what would the current zoning regulations require for this development. Building setbacks are based on height, so again, with a 360-foot tall building, setbacks are not going to be met with that. So they're proposing a 30-foot setback on France, again, that 40-foot setback to the actual edge of the road right of way. On 69th would be a 15-foot setback, but that would be 30 feet to the actual, to the curb. We do have a unique provision in our code, and this carries through really all of our zoning districts. Any building that is nine stories or taller needs to maintain a setback that's six times the height of the building. So again, this is a 360-foot tall building, so a setback from an R1 property needs to be 2,160 feet, again, based on that 360-foot building times six. So with the proposed location of these towers would be about 410 to 440 feet from the nearest residential property. So again, the underlying zoning was four stories and 48 feet. The floor area ratio that's proposed here is 1.5, which is really is very similar to the recent projects that we've seen in the area with the exception of the Trammell Crowe project. But again, that is within reason and within what zoning allows in our, the 50th and France area, Grandview area, so that does seem reasonable. The density that's proposed here is 44 units an acre, so it's not a super high dense project either. Again, it's mainly height. So what would be required with this request is a comprehensive plan amendment that would increase the height for this site from four stories, 48 feet, to 24 stories and 36 feet. The OR residential, Office Residential District does have a 30 unit per acre maximum. We would need to increase that to 50. And again, a rezoning to PUD would also be requested. Just wanted to point out some of, so there is existing height in the Southdale area. This map, while kind of messy, does indicate we have done a couple of 18-story buildings, the Park Plaza down on, just off 494. The Westin is 18 stories. The Edina Towers is 17. So just to quickly point out, and again, these are wider buildings, the buildings that were, are proposed here, a little more slender in nature. And that's the Edina Towers on, just off the crosstown. So I wanted to frame up a little for the Planning Commission to, as part of your discussion, a couple of questions that you may want to try to ask yourself or wrestle with. Is 24 stories acceptable for this site? And is this a transitional development? Again, this is located in an area that we designate as kind of that transitional area from residential into the Southdale area. So with that, I can stop or answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, the applicant is here to provide a little more detail of the project.
Thank you, Carrie. Is there any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Lee?
Carrie, was there anything different about this process leading up to this sketch plan? Because it seemed like we had quite a bit of stuff in our packet as far as the public. So can you, what is, from your perspective, what, how much did the public know?
Yeah, for this one, unlike our typical sketch plan, the public is much more aware of this process than most others. They followed, I want to say followed specifically, but with the Market Street project and the 50th and France area, there was a lot of outreach before the sketch plan and a formal application, so they've kind of followed along that same process in trying to let the public know this is coming. This also did hit the newspapers last week, so I think a lot of people saw the Star Tribune article, the Business Journal. So there was newspaper articles that were written about the project, so because of that, we received a lot of feedback.
And so neighbors were notified, then, about this coming up? Or did they find out through the newspapers?
The city did not notify anyone. Nope, there hasn't been a formal application yet. So once that formal application is made, then the city would notify.
Thank you.
Also want to point out, because we did receive a lot of emails and feedback, everything that we received up until the packets went out on Friday was included in your packet, and we have handed out this evening everything that's happened, every email that we've received since then.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Carrie? Commissioner Nevaroff?
Carrie, affordable housing, is there an affordable housing component to this? Did I miss that?
Oh, yes, sorry, I did not mention that, but the applicant has stated that they aren't able to fit the affordable housing into the project, but have made a commitment to either provide it elsewhere or provide, well, they're still looking at, can they purchase some property elsewhere? So not to be, they're not proposing specific housing within this project, but providing it elsewhere in the community.
Great, any other questions? Okay, great. So does the applicant want to, oh, sorry.
Kind of to piggyback on Ian's comment, are there examples of a developer doing such a thing? And if so, could you kind of list them about affordable housing elsewhere?
We haven't had anyone provide it elsewhere specifically. Recall, the policy's only been in place a little over a year. So we've had the one project where they did provide the units within the project, that's the Market Street project. The other is the Lincoln Apartments, where they provided a dedication to the city to purchase or provide additional units somewhere else in the city, but dedicated, it was in the amount of $2 million for the city to put into affordable housing somewhere else in the city. We haven't acquired that site yet.
Thanks, Carrie. I wonder if you can articulate, because we have a lot of guests here tonight, articulate the process and how this differs from someone coming forward for more of an approval or a blessing?
Yeah, so this is a relatively new process. We've had sketch plan for maybe five years or so. So it's an opportunity for developer before they really develop a project specifically, invest a lot of money in developing plans, although in this case, they have gone a long way to develop these plans, but to get feedback from the Planning Commission and City Council before they make a formal application. So should they, after the Planning Commission reviews it, it'll go to the City Council on June 6th. So at that time, the applicant would decide, do we want to make a formal application with this project? Are we going to amend it, make some adjustments? Then they would apply for the comprehensive plan amendment, the rezoning. Public hearing would be held here by the Planning Commission. We would send out public notification of that hearing 10 days in advance of the meeting. We would provide notice in the local newspaper. Planning Commission would make recommendation to the City Council at a meeting following yours, generally three weeks after the Planning Commission meets, and the Planning Commission would take final action on the comprehensive plan and the preliminary rezoning. About a two-to-three-month process in all.
Commissioner Nevaroff?
Thank you. Back to the affordable housing. If a developer commits to, say, do a funding of $1 million for affordable housing in lieu of putting affordable housing into their development and being proposed, when is that money paid?
It is paid prior to issuance of a building permit. So in the case of Lincoln Drive, that was park dedication, and that payment was made.
It's paid right in front. It's not, the city doesn't come back years later and say, oh, we're doing it now, now are we calling in the IOU. It's paid upfront. The city has the money.
It's paid before any development happens on the site, correct?
Thank you, Carrie.
And to follow up on that, is the city, does the city actually purchase properties to, or is considering purchasing property to do affordable housing? How would that play out?
Yeah, so it's hard to say, because we haven't done it yet. So the city owns property around town, so there's been some thought of, maybe we do the development ourselves, bring someone in, and that $2 million can go toward a development. But that's a decision of the HRA, which is the City Council.
But in general, the city doesn't typically get, act as a developer. It may, in some cases, probably be better to just approach it from a project level, project by project level.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then one follow-up question on the sketch plan. Typically, my understanding of the sketch plan process is to bring it in at a state that is a sketch, so that we can still have some input that might impact either the site or height and things like that. This seems very, very well-developed. Has there been communication with the city prior to this with the developer, and how much communication has there been so far?
Yeah, certainly, we've met with, we've met with the developer on several occasions, not untypical of any other project, but I would treat this as, well, as a sketch plan. Just because they've presented plans that are very detailed compared to some others that we see, that shouldn't feel free to provide comment, just as any other sketch plan.
Chair Hamilton?
There's a, I think there was a mention early on that this is perhaps Phase 1. Is there, we don't see any graphics that talk about the other half of the site that finishes those through streets. We see some graphics.
Yeah, I didn't provide any in my presentation. They're part of your packet where you can see, especially the north-south Woonorf being finished. I don't have that as part of mine, but the applicant will have that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, now the applicant can come up. Thank you.
My name is Luigi Bernardi, president of Arcadia in France. Thank you for being here this evening as we present to you our latest and most exciting project to date. Your feedback and comments are important to us as we move forward. My family has been in business for about 50 years, building in and around Edina and helping to revitalize its neighborhoods and industrial areas. My father, Tony Bernardi, was honored to be part of this and participated by lending his unique European perspective and sense of quality to all the projects he undertook. He started his family business by developing the Edina Industrial Park and was in partnership with Kirk Carlson, developing the Radisson South Hotel. The Radisson South Hotel was at the time a very unprecedented building, which now has become an integral part of the Edina skyline. Like my father, I want to continue his legacy of developing high-quality projects and help Edina continue to be a great place to live. I grew up on Cornelia Drive and attended the elementary school there. In my high school years, I lived with my parents at Pointe de France. My daughters were born in Fairview Southdale, and St. Patrick's Church, Catholic Church was our parish for many years. I recently completed the Aurora in France Senior Assisted Living Complex on 65th and France, which has been warmly received by both residents and community leaders alike. It is my privilege to be able to develop buildings of both functionality and beauty. To that end, I have been the recipient of several awards of excellence on projects throughout the Twin Cities area. Tonight, we are here to present to you a project that will become iconic for the City of Edina, that will set a great precedent for quality on future products, future projects, excuse me. This dynamic project, Astell Edina, incorporates Edina long-term vision of connectivity, community, accessibility, walkability, and will become a destination. I have been blessed to have a great team whose commitment to quality parallels my vision of functionality and beauty. Carl Runk of Ryan now will present the project in detail. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, my name is Carl Runk, Director of Realty Development with Ryan Companies. Thank you for hearing us say the sketch plan review. I also want to mention as part of our development team is Edina-based John Kramer &amp; Sons. They're the five-time Edina Magazine Home Builder of the Year, and they're known for their extraordinary quality and timeless homes. They've added to the Edina housing stock for years. Gary Kramer, their CEO, is with us tonight. I'll give some more backdrop to how we got to this presentation and where we are today, and then hand over to Mike Ryan, who's the lead architect of this proposed project. So we started this endeavor about six months ago, meeting with the city early on. They immediately advised us to understand and follow the Southdale Area Working Group's guiding principles, which we understand are unanimously approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, and are now being prepared for inclusion in the 2018 comp plan update. We see this project as transformational, and a 100-year building that will open in 2020, or two years after the comp plan update has been adopted. Our team really took each of the guiding principles to heart as we incorporated them into a world-class design, befitting of Edina, that will set a new standard of quality and distinction that future developments in the Southdale District will follow. As Edina, our belief is as Edina grows and evolves, we believe this project helps the Southdale area truly stand out as distinctive within the Twin Cities as a sought-after place to live, shop, work, and play. So why this site? Why are we proposing this project at this location? Being a transitional site, as Carrie described it, we think this is 100% corner of the city, per the guiding principles and per our market research. We think it's currently underutilized, and as we've evaluated higher and best uses for the next 100 years, as Luigi thinks, we firmly believe that owner-occupied housing residences should anchor the site. And while there have been thousands, hundreds, and coming into thousands of apartment units have been delivered and now proposed further in throughout Edina, there hasn't been one condo project in the last 10 years in Edina that has come forward. We think there's incredible demand right now at this location for condos that will open up, you know, existing Edina residents. open up existing Edina residents, who really believe will buy these units and open up their homes for new families coming into the city. The district, the Southdale District, is a preeminent destination for luxury retail, medical services, and innovative forward-thinking. These are assets we're trying to build upon. There's a tremendous amount of demand for Edina residents to live in walking distance of these remarkable assets, promoting active, healthy lifestyles that don't require dependency on an automobile. We've created a residential village that breaks down the current super block into smaller blocks with tree-lined interior streets with sidewalks that are safe for residents, and really soften the transition from the Galleria and Southdale area to the Cornelia neighborhood to the west. Estelle represents a 20-fold increase to the annual property taxes coming off these three parcels, including 1.25 million estimated annually to Edina Public Schools, which we know are very important to residents who would buy in this building and choose to stay in Edina. I'll turn it over to Mike Ryan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here. Can you see the, on your screens, the revisioning Southdale District? Okay, great. I saw some looks up there that suggested maybe you couldn't. My name is Mike Ryan. I'm part of the fourth generation of our family business. We started in Hibbing, Minnesota, in 1938, just before the war, and we moved to Edina when we came to the Twin Cities in 1960s. We've since moved downtown Minneapolis. It's an important community for us as a company. I was born at Fairview, just a few blocks from the site, so it has a lot of meaning for me as well. I lead our national engineering and architecture team, so we work around the country, and the team, some of which are in the room tonight, help put together these slides that you're going to see. So I'm going to build upon what Carrie walked us through and talk through several of the nuances to the project and hope to give you guys a great picture of what we're proposing. Relative to why our plans are so developed, this was a proposal that we felt like we needed to invest in heavily on a personal level to make sure we had a project of quality that we could bring forward. So simply put, that's why we went as far as we have, and there is a tremendous amount of work still to be done for our team. So these next slides represent the nine principles that the Southdale Work Group has put together relative to their hopes for future development in the corridor. I'm going to assume that this commission knows these principles in depth, so I'm not going to spend much time on them. I'm happy to come back. But all of these images are right out of what is currently published and approved by the city council and the planning commission. Architectural variety, mixes of use, family-friendly nature, green space, summer and winter city, and connections, all of which leads to a destination, which is kind of the critical pinnacle to it. So our site here, of course, across the street from the Galleria, the, kind of, one of the deficits of this area is that there are so many of these mega-blocks. So one of the guiding principles was to break that down, as we've heard already. 200 by 200 is kind of deemed the ideal block size, and we'll show you how that is represented on our site. Okay, so the existing three properties are the BMO Harris Bank, the Bremer Bank, and the Galleria Office Building. You can see all three of those there in the foreground of that aerial shot. Bremer Bank is on the hard corner. BMO Harris is back on 69th. And then the Galleria Office Building fronts France Avenue and is that 1960s brown brick building. So our vision for the site kind of started with the greater working plan, and then, of course, was really informed by this desire to break the super block, which we find our project to be a part of, down into four quadrants. As we looked at that, we were really taken with this idea that the promenade that exists today has been so successful at kind of subdividing some of those mega-blocks as it is, all to the east of France, and that there's an opportunity between the Avenue on France project and ours to continue a west promenade or promenade west kind of theme to that side. The woo nerf of the Avenue on France project is kind of its critical link, and we are plugging into that, extending that southward. So here is the image that was shown earlier. The Avenue on France project would be on the top of this slide with France Avenue as the big yellow arrow on the right. Those bisecting pedestrian ways, we are going to be able to and are proposing to put in place two of those immediately. The other two links that continue those, we don't own the properties that would enable that, so I'll walk everyone through that. Because of that, those two links kind of trigger two key moments for traffic coming in and out of the site, and those are the bright yellow circles. I've switched over to an axonometric view, so just kind of reorient everyone. At the very top of the slide, you can see the corner of 69th and France. This is Bremer Bank. This is BMO Harris, and this is the Galleria Office Building. Does everyone have a good concept of what they're looking at? So our, the first thing that we're doing is kind of going subterranean with all the parking. I would say 90 to 95% of the parking is below grade. The rest that's at street grade is more like you'd see on a city street in line and parallel. Those are the two pedestrian ways that would be put in place through our project, and you can see where they start and stop. Those missing links are shown as dashes there. Those are things that we think that our project, if it were to happen, would then trigger those continuations on future development for the block. Then to the north, you would connect through our site across 69th and immediately have access to the woo nerf, so those would operate kind of as one continuous pedestrian experience. The project is conceived of as sitting on top of a plinth, and so this is a concept that comes out of the Southdale Work Group. And so there's about a story and a half plinth that the project sit on top of, and what that accomplishes is it meets the sidewalk with a one-and-a-half-story building, which gives a more humanly scaled environment right at the sidewalk itself, and then you set the building back on top of that. There are six-row homes, as was mentioned, so those would be like the typical brownstones, inline-town homes that you've seen in the sort of more eastern cities in the U.S. Minneapolis has some, not a tremendous amount. Out on the 69th and France corner, we are very excited about the pedestrian plaza that we would create there, and we'll show you when we go through the animation how that looks. But what you see on that, our belief is that that plaza will trigger the Restoration Hardware project to respond and do something equally nice out in that public realm, which therefore we think will trigger the Galleria, where Restoration Hardware is moving out of, to also kind of force that hand. And I think there's an opportunity to get all three corners of this 100% critical intersection for Edina to have this sort of pedestrian orientation that it doesn't currently have. There are then two vertical residential towers that sit on top of that plinth. There are the footprints of both of those, and we were discussing earlier the narrowness and slenderness of that. That's something that we were very intentional about, so I'll speak to that in a bit. We would phase the project. There are some domino effects that need to happen relative to the banks on site, so they need to be moved into a project, then moved back into the new project. So what you see marked there as phase one would be the first tower, the six-row homes and the small retail out on Valley View and 69th. Phase two would be the second tower then. The sidewalks were already mentioned. One of the nuances to the sidewalk plan that is indicated by the work group is that you have this 20-foot planted buffer between cars and the sidewalk. That's unlike anything in the Twin Cities that exists, as far as I know. And then you have a 10-foot sidewalk and a 10-foot planter up against a tree. It really kind of puts the pedestrian in a elevated position relative to the project and sidewalks. We think if built, these would be, we know these would be the nicest sidewalks on France Avenue. It would be a clear kind of indicator for future projects to meet this bar. Again, we went through the slide earlier, but there is sidewalk, walking on 69th and France, but then also these internal pedestrian woo nerf connections are something that we think are critical. You get in there and they are, autos can go there, of course, but they are bike and pedestrian first. This indicates just how the promenade, the Avenue on France project, our project, could all work together to create this sort of promenade west. Okay, I'm going to play an animation now, I hope. Oh, we had it. And this is going to take us from, it's going to walk around the entire block. So this is starting, just to orient ourselves, we're on 69th, back in closer to where that BMO Harris and Valley View are shown. So this would be the new BMO Harris building on the right, and you're going to see coming ahead the entire development. So right off the bat, you kind of get a sense of what that bermed green way next to the road would do for you. This is that shot. We saw it earlier, but again, now you can see the six-row homes on the right. Everywhere you kind of enter the woo nerf walkway, you have a gateway that meets you there, where we'd elevate the sidewalk, and it would be a clear kind of call to automobiles that you're now entering pedestrian environments. You'll see a series of these gateways as we go around the site. On the left of that slide there, and now you're going to pass it on the right, we envision, primarily the entire plinth is lined with retail. We'll talk more about that, but we envision a restaurant going in this space. There would likely be five or six retail spaces when all is said and done. That restaurant, we would think, has a large outdoor patio space out near the France intersection. And now we're going to have a look at what the plaza would be like out on 69th and France. So there's a shot of that plaza. This is about a 5,000-square-foot space. Something like this does not exist on the France corridor currently, so there's not great precedent, but that is a very nice, nicely scaled pedestrian and public space that would be on private property. And so we think that's important. That's certainly a give-back to the community and would improve the quality of the neighborhood, I believe, in what it would trigger across the streets. You can see there how the residential tower sits on top of the plinth and how the restaurant engages with that. We're now going to walk down France on the sidewalk, and you'll see kind of a sidewalk experience that, in my opinion, is really exciting. It kind of calls what France could be if this were done up and down. So there you can see the 20-foot berm on the left separating you. It's actually elevated. What that enables you to do is kind of a double alley of trees, and that's important, kind of removes you from the auto environment, brings you into this safer pedestrian environment. And then you have a 10-foot sidewalk and 10 feet of planting up against the building. Again, these are retail storefront windows that you're passing on the right, so very much an urban experience and a boulevard experience. So you just passed phase one. Now you're kind of looking at phase two there. This is another one of those gateway moments where you'd have a raised sidewalk, or crosswalk, rather, and you'd enter into this more pedestrian-oriented environment. That bridgeway is for residents from phase one and two to connect to their roof terraces there. That's not a public space, but it serves more as a gateway for the public. So now we're heading west, and you have retail on both sides of this space here and inline parking, and you can see now the townhomes in the foreground. And we're going to take a right here and actually go into, walk that pedestrian walkway, and it'll show you what the motor court experience is like as well for the condominium. We just passed by there on the right side where the auto and loading entries would be, so they're hidden behind pretty discreet garage doors. And the townhomes have one kind of tuck-under garage door as well, so they really have the appearance and experience of a walk-up, city-activated, stoop-level sidewalk. So that's that experience inside the motor court. And again, this would be kind of primarily a pedestrian-oriented, cobbled, paved street experience that is open to the public. So we're going to go up in the air now, and you'll see what this looks like from above, and then that'll kind of end with one of the renderings that everyone has already seen and has been out in the papers. So again, from here, you have, Galleria is on the left in the distance. Avenue on France would be immediately behind your left shoulder here, and that pedestrian way would connect there. You can see the six-row homes in the foreground on the right, and some of the green roof terraces and amenity terraces that are up on top of that plinth. So that gives you a sense of what the buildings look like. That is the 24-story building on the left, a 20-story building on the right. We thought the difference in those two kind of played to the architectural variety that was called for. We didn't want the towers to be the same size, just from a visual. Okay, I've got a few more slides to go through. So these are here for reference. We can come back to them to answer questions. There is an image just from up above what the tower would look like. You can certainly, I think, get the impression from this how much emphasis we've put on the narrowness and the articulation at the top that these buildings would be, something that's iconic and befitting of the city. That's the shot from York. This is a shot from in front of Cornelia School. So there you can see the two towers in the distance. This is our checklist of those nine principles. We really feel like we have tried to invest heavily in the public realm and in the pedestrian experience so that we can meet those, kind of set a new tone for what this district could achieve. We think we hit on all of those levels, although, of course, some of them are subjective. Carl mentioned earlier the tax revenue, so I won't go into this in detail, but there are significant opportunities that the site and this project would produce. The 1.25 million for the schools annually is a very significant one. We also think the demographic that's likely to be in this building is more an empty nester category. So at the same time that they're providing significant tax base for schools, we don't believe that they are going to be also adding students to the school at the same rate. Currently, virtually all the stormwater on the site leaves the site and goes into the public system. Our design will keep virtually all of it on the site going forward through various strategies. This is measured, you know, in a technical standpoint from a 100-year event, so on a 100-year event, it's an 83% reduction. But on a normal kind of day-to-day, it's, virtually all water stays on site. The retail in the plinth is oriented on 69th and France avenues and then a little bit onto the internal streetways. The raised pedestrian crosswalks are something that is a traffic calming measure. Light, we have met twice in kind of just open-house format at Think Bank for neighbors and residents of the neighborhood. In those meetings, lighting came up as a clear concern. We've tried to work with BMO Harris to get them to turn down their lights currently. In a redesign, we can dim those lights, but the slides on the right show our lighting intentions. Back-of-the-row homes would be lit like residential buildings, and the tower itself would be very subtly lit. Shadows are also, of course, a curious moment for everyone, what do these look like, especially relative to a tall building. So we're going to show a series of these slides. They go from 9:00 AM, noon, and 3:00 PM through all four seasons, so I'll just walk everyone through this. So this is the summer 9:00 AM shadow study. You can see where that goes, and when you add trees there, that just gives you a sense of scale to those. This is noon, again, noon with trees, and this is 3:00 PM, and 3:00 PM with trees. So summer seems like it's a pretty, very low impact. Spring and fall have the same, this is on the equinox, so they have the same shadows. So this is two seasons here at once. This is 9:00 AM. That's 9:00 AM with trees. That's noon, noon with trees, and that's 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM with trees. So again, everyone can analyze those how they'd like, but we think it's quite low impact from that standpoint. Summer, winter solstice, this is when shadows are at their worst. This is the longest, shortest day of the year. That is the shadow at 9:00 AM. At 9:00 AM in Minnesota, the sun has not kind of crested very far, and it's just a good reminder, it does not rise in the east. It rises from the southeast. So this angle is virtually where the kind of building shadows first appear. That's it with shadows, with the trees as well. At noon... At noon, at noon with trees, and then that is 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM with trees. So one benefit to the residents to the west is that afternoon sun. It's morning sun that's impacted, not afternoon sun. We think that's a, the better of the two. Ideally, we would own the entire site, it would be great, and we would be able to develop it as we see fit. We don't currently have that luxury, but we would hope that future development would use the two-block parcels that are further west as a step up and an opportunity to go from three to five stories. And that's what we've rendered here and extend those alleyways and Wu-Nerf experiences through. You can actually connect Sendale north to south and then allow the buildings on France to more belong to France in their density and height, which is why we propose them in that way. Okay, with that, I am going to pause there and open it up for questions to the commission.
Thank you. All right, maybe I'll just start down on Commissioner Hopps.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Just a few questions over here.
Thank you.
That's okay. So how much of the property that you're talking about do you own or have under option today?
That piece right there.
Okay. And then in terms of the demographics that you're thinking about for, for this project, what are those? Then what is kind of the target value you're thinking about these condos would sell for?
Yeah, I think the Westin Galleria is probably the best comp. So that is what we're thinking in terms of price range. It's a little tough to gauge because there's been so little product in the last 10 years, but our target audience is the empty nester Edina resident today moving into the building. Of course, there's going to be a broader context than that and we can't quite predict it, but that's who we think is going to be in the building.
Right. And then for a value in today's dollars, what do you imagine of the typical?
Yep. The Edina, the Westin would be our best price point. My role in the job, believe it or not, is not selling the units. So I would say whatever the Westin is kind of projecting, and certainly there are seven-figure units in there, and there are several that are six figures as well.
Right. And then I just noticed the, the green rooftops we had on some of the, talk about, and that's certainly one of the, the principles that we're talking about with the Southdale plan, speak to the sustainability issues, the carbon footprint of this project, LEED standards you might be thinking about.
Let me try to back up to, see that slide, but I'm missing it. The green roofs, basically the plinth, we would view as, it's almost all accessible, so we would want the plinth rooftop to be as green as possible. Not only that, the condos themselves, the towers, have 12 by 14 rooms on the corners and we would, that's really like an outdoor living space, it's not a balcony. So we would anticipate that those would be greened as well. But relative to kind of big picture sustainability, stormwater, I think is one big box check. This project would be quite advanced for
That's great.
for the city. The second would be the option, providing the living option of people moving into high-density, smaller unit footprint in a shared building is inherently sustainable. So we would be kind of checking that box in a major way in my mind. The third is the building is not an all-glass building. It's about 40% stone and precast. And because of that, the building is going to have an inherent efficiency that would be better than if it were a glass building. So we haven't explored any of the, where we fall on LEED standards or, or that sort of thing. That's something that we would certainly do at a later date. So those are, those are kind of the big three that I would imagine, the new energy codes as well. We find that new buildings today in Minnesota are quite efficient. We just finished Wells Fargo's new office space downtown. That's the, the second, it's the largest LEED Platinum building in the state. Like, our team is quite well-versed at, at how to achieve that, so.
So is, is that something that you would perhaps consider with this building in terms of some level of LEED certification?
Yeah, I think so. We have not entertained that just on our list of priorities today. That's been not there, not because it's not valued, just because at the moment in time we haven't gotten there. But yeah, we will absolutely fill out the checklist. We do that for every project and then determine through the ownership team whether they think that it's appropriate to pursue LEED or not.
Okay. And I would just say overall, I mean, certainly it is impressive what you guys have done in terms of the work you've put in. I was part of that Southdale group, so I appreciate that you really have thought about those issues. This is that transition area, and so I guess a concern I have, and one of the things we talked about in the Southdale group are having kind of hard edges and abrupt changes. So I think that is certainly is a concern for me as well as just the overall height, the same kind of things that Kerry was talking about, and I'm sure you've heard. So I'll let the other folks kind of ask their questions, we'll maybe come back to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee, do you have any comments? I'm just going to, can I go down the row?
Again, thank you for the presentation. I thought the, actually, the, the moving little video was very helpful. Do you have any shots you can share from, well, my concern is obviously, this project here is probably the closest I've ever seen to butt up to a single-family residential neighborhood. Do you know of any other examples in Minnesota, other cities, that come this close with that height, that relationship?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think some of the buildings that City Planner Teague showed earlier likely are within that same proximity, but we haven't done the study. That gives you an explicit answer of where that, that takes place. College campuses are one area that has come to mind for us that you have a very similar relationship. A lot of those find themselves in residential communities, so that's one area where you have precedent like that. And then the edges of other cities. So downtown Minneapolis, there are a couple of situations that exist like that.
So significantly larger cities or academic campuses right now? If you, if you could provide some examples in the future, that certainly would help. So the concern here is, how do we handle this? Historically, Edina has, has relied and still does rely in number one is their, their residential fabric, that we are a residential community. So the, the height of this is just so far out of the ballpark, I, I really don't even know how to approach it. That's my first reaction. Speaking of height, when you showed the, the shadow diagram, if you can go back to that one, I don't know if you can, the one where it's at, obviously, we're always looking at the worst-case scenario, but on that, the neighborhood to the west, the longest shadow, I don't, did, could you get it so that you could show where the peak of that building is? I think it kind of just bled right off the, the diagram. I think it was the winter condition.
This one.
Yeah. How far does that extend?
I think what you're seeing there is about 90% of that shadow. So
Okay.
We could certainly come back and share exactly where that.
Okay. And, and you know what might be helpful is to see that in a moving pattern with, with different times. Obviously, maybe that's only there for five minutes and then it moves on, I don't know, but.
I think what's important is when we run these calcs, when you show the studies and we can come back and do that, you know, they're, the shadows aren't there kind of instantly as the sun rises, they sort of evolve and so they kind of appear. Nine o'clock, this is about the first time you really see it, maybe 8:30, it kind of starts to be a blurry image, but we can certainly provide a little more detail on what that looks like.
Can you say, you know, I actually think that the townhomes feel like that's a, probably a pretty appropriate design for the site. What is driving the height of this building?
Yeah. We had gone through kind of an exhaustive effort to look at, how can we bring a high-quality project here that has an outstanding public realm that meets the expectations that we think were set by the work group's work? And when we enter into that exercise, the height of the building to drive the return that the land prices kind of establish, the land here is quite expensive, 24 stories and 18, kind of that density is what gets us a return that can also provide the public realm. We also set out, Mr. Bernardi hit on this early on, but his challenge to all of us was high architectural quality has to be part of this. This can't be another building that's just there. And we all know there are plenty of residential buildings in the Twin Cities that just kind of exist and they have nothing special to offer. So the way that the tower is narrow and tapers and has character to it at the top is also part of what's driving that. I think, this is, these next three slides kind of are born out of some of the neighborhood discussions. So this is the site as it exists today. When we look at it, we said, okay, could this be an office building? And what kind of land price, what kind of office building do you need to justify the land price? To us, you can see all the red boxes, it's not viable. That project doesn't work on a return standpoint. It also involves about an eight- or nine-story parking garage. So that's not something we were interested in. There's been a lot of six-story apartment buildings built. This site could accomplish a, you could have an economic return that would work with those. We believe, and I think we have heard from many of the community members, that the quality of the architecture of those projects is not something that's of the quality that this district should command or hopes to achieve. So this just gives you the experience of what that would look like. It certainly wouldn't involve owner-occupied either, and that's a non-starter, we believe, in the, just in the development world right now. But is there market demand for it? Absolutely. Could we make it work? We think so. We just wouldn't want to be part of that kind of project at this type of intersection. So then, when you turn to condominiums, the owner-occupied solution, we could have a shorter building. This is a 15-story building, 16-story building that would drive about the same kind of return. It would be very broad, broader than the Westin, and we think that this building would detract from the architectural quality and character of the buildings themselves as landmarks in a way that we weren't confident with, proud of, wouldn't want to bring to market. We also think that they would drive less of an economic return as it is and there'd be less demand for them. The second component of these that are troublesome is we can't phase them. Without having a condominium built in the last 10 years, there's not great understanding of what the demand is. So we can't cut that building in half and add the second half later like we can with our proposal. So that density in sort of a narrower footprint, we believe, causes less impact on the shadow side. It's a more attractive building form, it's a more elegant form. And this is what it looks like, just this kind of flat extrusions if they were all glass. And as you can see, we've tried to sculpt them down. So while the buildings are tall, they get quite narrow at the top, you know, one unit per floor, the top few floors. So we think that we've been trying to drive architectural quality as a result of, and as part of the equation that led to 24 stories.
Okay, so you're saying that quality to you means height, because you're saying you can't do a shorter building with the kind of quality that you would be comfortable with, is that?
Yeah, sorry, that's not what I'm saying. I think what I am trying to articulate is that the height is, and the towers themselves are of high quality, so are the one-and-a-half-story plinth and sidewalk experience. So both, and they could be separated.
Okay. Would you happen to have, last question, any renderings taken from the neighborhood perspective of what those towers would look like? You had one from York, but do you have anything to the west that would be looking?
Sorry, close your eyes, this is going to make you sick. That's the only rendering we have from the neighborhood side. So this is from in front of, this is on Cornelius Drive and in front of the school. So the school's entry is just to the right there. And that photo is taken about a week ago, maybe two weeks ago now.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything?
Sure. If you, we talked in terms of staging the construction project, have you given any thoughts to the access to that location? It's got some challenges to it.
So, just so I understand the question correctly, what do we think the access will look like during construction? Okay. Sorry, I'm going to make us sick again. So for the Phase One component of the project, this entire site would be screened. City sidewalks, we, I would imagine, would be open, we haven't thought that far ahead, but envision that entire, the townhomes, the plinth, the tower, the branch bank being reduced all within one contained site. So you would still have access to the south piece of the site and all of the properties down here would still maintain their access as would the salon building there. So 69th and France, we would envision them like an urban setting where we're not hindering traffic on those streets. You know, other than your typical, the construction traffic itself.
And you draw that construction traffic primarily on 69th then, in France?
You know, I'm not leading our construction team, we can bring that back to you next time.
Well, my concern specifically relates to 70th Street, because that is a very, though it is a county road, is highly residential and, you know, as well trafficked as it is, probably does not need a long line of
Certainly, 70th would be less of our preference for Phase One, just logistically.
And this, my second line of questions about traffic.
Yep.
Have you done any preliminary work on the traffic impact of this project?
So the question is relative to traffic. We have six townhomes, 82 units in the first building, 70 in the second building. So altogether, there's a pretty low traffic density that spins off. We don't have the final results of it, so we can only speak kind of anecdotally. The city consults the traffic engineer directly, so we are in that process right now. And what we can say is that it's, it's very low impact relative to other projects that have happened here. I mean, the, the number of dwelling units in the, in the building is relatively low.
Commissioner Strauss?
Yeah, not, not to repeat, Commissioner Lee and, well, the other members have, you know, certainly the concerns with the height, good luck with that. I, what I, I was impressed with, with the presentation and particularly the Southdale area principles and how you've addressed those and met them have been a very big thing in front of this commission. I liked what I heard there. Overall, this, I even, in the, the future phases, I think, makes this whole block a very desirable and I think it's going to be a beautiful build-out. Like I said, the height of the buildings will be, it's going to be, it's going to be an issue, but I don't know what to say. But I like what I've, what I've seen. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's not there right now, I'll be back. As far as the height goes, I'm, I see it as, as a very handsome attribute as, as Southdale begins to move towards downtown Edina, which I, clearly I believe it to be doing. I think it's a very handsome project, very well-thought-out. I'm a little surprised that the Harris Bank site is pretty much left alone, and I'm sure you looked at that. It, it seems to be not as integrated, perhaps, as, as I, my sense is that your design team would like it to be, and maybe there are reasons for that. But to the degree that you can, I would encourage you to, to look at how that might blend more into the fabric of what you've created there. I'm a little bit, because it's new to the world I live in, the parking pedestrian walkway that separates your two phases, at least in plan, looks like a double-loaded parking lot. I know that that's not the intent for it to be that way. I'm, I'm, I want to support you in every way I can to have it not be a parking lot. And the next time we see it, I would like to see, I would like to learn more about it. I'd like to see more about what you're thinking about it. I'd like for you to talk to us at some point in time about that edge on both of those buildings. Clearly, the swimming pool is in the upper deck and for the residents, that makes a great deal of sense, I think. I wonder what that does as it goes down behind that retail face and how that skin is going to get enlivened, because it seems like, if you look through the window, you're going to either see a glass edge of a pool and somebody's swimming in it, or, or maybe I just don't quite understand. But I'd be curious about how that works. I think that's where I am for where it is right now. I encourage you to, you know, keep going. I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about what it might be.
Great. Thank you for the comments. Just something I didn't mention on the banks, and maybe this will fill in a couple of gaps. Just something I didn't mention on the banks, and maybe this will fill in a couple of gaps. Like virtually every site on France, multiple property owners, existing leases, there's a lot of complexity to the France Avenue corridor. Banking right now, virtually all of the retail branch banks in the country are trying to figure out how to reinvent themselves. They, that generally includes reducing their size. They're located in many of the best intersections in the country, and they have these big footprints. Our site is proposing to go, I believe, from seven drive-throughs down to two and maintain two banks. So to me, on a traffic comparison note, that's a significant improvement. And BMO Harris, while it is generally in the same part of the site, we've tried to make it like the rest of the plinth, similar height, similar architectural quality. And that's something that we will continue to work on.
For what it's worth, Department, I don't know if this is very meaningful to folks, but at one time in my life, I lived on Oak Lawn, right down, not about two blocks from Cornelia. And used to walk and bike to Southdale. You'd take your life in your hands trying to get across the street and go through these kind of deserted block that this has been of confused parking and undemarked driving lanes. And I think this is gonna clean that up and make it a much more delightful way to walk this, to walk to Southdale, to walk to the Galleria, to walk to the destination that this will become.
Commissioner Bennett?
First, thanks for your time and the immense quality of the presentation. I mean, incredible detail. And I've said it before, but we really appreciate that experience that we can get, especially with a walkthrough, to really feel what it's like, to experience what you guys are thinking and how we can fit into that and how the neighbors can fit into it and how they might see it otherwise. I echo kind of some of the comments of fellow commissioners with the height. And it's mostly because it's something very new, to have something that tall, especially on the outskirts of the Southdale area. If this were in the middle, I think there'd be not many objections whatsoever. So I think everyone's just kind of up to the challenge of digesting that. And certainly you guys are economically. Other than that, I, from everything that this site can do and looking forward as our community has a vision for this area and I have a vision for Edina, you know, long ahead, this site really gets me excited. And what you've presented is very exciting and really cleans up an otherwise ordinary, unattractive kind of cornerstone to this area. And it challenges me personally to really think bold too. Now that I have two young children, I don't think about how I fit into this, but how the future can hold for certain areas in Edina. And I feel like Southdale is a very unique thing that we have as a community where retail is changing swiftly. And an area like Southdale, other places in the country and the state could see some blight and challenges. Edina and the developers that are coming here are really challenging us to innovate and think forward about how we can maximize and optimize a place that we have that once was a bustling area, still is, how can we keep it that way? I feel like integrating dense residential development is an awesome way, especially owner occupied. There's more at stake. It frees up homes in this area for families like me and my friends that can't otherwise find housing here, that would like to raise their families here and continue with the awesome educational systems we have. So those are my priorities. And everything you presented speaks to walkability, convenience, connectedness, and in a smart way of dividing the block, kind of the way we want to. So I applaud your efforts there. And I kind of just have a list of a few other things, questions and suggestions. First, as for questions, you mentioned stormwater management. And I love the graphic of just the rain droplet and going inward. And I know you said you had strategies. I'd like to, with an engineering background, just kind of understand some of those strategies. I know it's preliminary, but I think that might speak to some of the sustainable things that people like Steve and myself are really impassioned about. How are some, how are some of the ways gonna be achieved to adequately handle stormwater on this big site?
Quickly, there is, we just finished up a five-block development downtown Minneapolis that's won most of the Green Streets awards that are out there. One of the key strategies we use there is, first of all, ample plantings. So less sidewalk, more green. That's not rocket science, but it works. The second is to also layer into that some rain gardens so that they actually collect water as well as put it off. That's kind of the second. And then the third is that you, that we'll have some underground storage capacity as well. And so we'll have a detention. And then now I'm gonna get quickly out of my pay grade, so I'm gonna stop there. But there would be some underground chambers to handle some of it as well.
So I guess to lead into some suggestions about that and what I see here. I still see a lot of paved surfaces, maybe, I mean, you have below-grade parking, so they can't be permeable. In a sense, to capture it, they could redirect it onsite. But, you know, to make it more of a pedestrian focus, like the Vooner, Vonner, whatever you want to call it, it still seems automobile centric. So just a thought with, you know, you have this big wide open space. So maybe making it still more, having a little structure in there oriented for pedestrians, like maybe a green path down the middle, not with huge plantings, but something that makes it more of a place than just a fountain. And then also to speak to Commissioner Hamilton's question about how these two phases merge together. That parking right there, a couple just ideas. And I mean, you guys have thought through all this, but we see these connections for pedestrians to kind of experience the site as very critical components to the success as a potential resident in this area going to visit that site. So as the sidewalks around the site look really handsome and very well thought out, I think there could be more to those areas. Maybe since they're supposed to be multimodal, not just for cars, maybe challenge you to make them more for pedestrians regardless. So maybe you put, instead of that bridge, maybe it's a full lid over this area with access for public to get on top with green space and then stack your pedestal up an extra story so that pool isn't showing? Just thoughts. And then parking underneath, fine. But I think we just want to see a little more creativity with how you are gonna manage the stormwater and kind of achieve some sustainable things. I just saw a lot of isolated plantings kind of amidst some of those paved surfaces that really won't stand much of a chance for longevity. But after that, I guess I had a question with the affordable housing. And you, and it might not be a question for you since you're more on the engineering side, but I guess why, why do you guys feel that there isn't a need or isn't a viability for that on this project? And if we're willing, or if people are open to some of this, this height, say 24 stories, I'm not gonna say what's an extra story, but how can you get? I mean, are there ways that you could manage to get it on the site? Because it's a really nice site. So it'd be nice to allow people that couldn't normally afford it to experience it.
I'll briefly respond. The affordable housing policy is unique to City of Edina. Doesn't exist for any other city in Minnesota. It hasn't been enacted with any foreownership projects, to our understanding. So it's just something that we're really trying to think through, and we don't have our arms wrapped around it right now.
Okay. One other question with the phasing, you mentioned Phase One, Phase Two. From what I saw earlier, you have subgrade parking covering both of those footprints. So I assume that you're actually starting part of Phase Two with Phase One for the parking. Just kind of walk through that process.
Yeah, somewhere on this city, this street pedestrian way here, there would be an underground party wall where, when Phase Two happens, you knock down part of that wall and create an opening. So it would be constructed as such that they could be independent and if Phase Two never happened, for whatever reason, you wouldn't have already built the parking.
And kind of to echo what Susan said, it'd be nice to see the graphic of the sun. I think a lot of people here are worried about, you know, what this building would do visually from the standpoint of their home nearby. And I think beyond just seeing the footprint of the shadow, there'd be a lot of value. And I think it would help your case more than hurt it with how brief, with how slender these buildings are, how brief that shadow might cross someone's property. So if next then, we could see that.
Great.
The last thing is, you talked about raised crosswalks, this example here. We've talked about a lot of kind of traffic calming measures and really, the main effective ones are really raised crosswalks or speed bumps. And it'd be nice to have one kind of, you know, at these entrances to slow people down coming in and out.
We just haven't figured out how to render them. We didn't intend to do them there.
And you talked about rain gardens. Just being familiar with some things they've done out in New York City, and this could help the city as well. They've developed kind of standards for the city to kind of implement rain gardens along boulevards of busy streets to capture stormwater in challenging areas. It might be helpful if you could kind of bring some of that expertise and suggestions to some of these boulevards as you step down for these crosswalks from the burms. Consider stepping down farther back for good visibility for people entering and exiting. But maybe step down into actual depressions that allow for a rain garden to kind of occur on the outside. And in that way, we as a city could use some of that, as you said, to kind of mimic this awesome experience walking around up and down France elsewhere. That's it, thanks a lot.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Burubi?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for paying attention to and incorporating the Southdale area initiatives. I think the design is great. I really like that we probably will have more than a million dollars that we can put into the schools. So it's taking kind of an ugly, nondescript, big block of nothing and putting a really good design there. So I applaud you for that. I love the greenery, the, you know, the elevated greenery between the street and the sidewalk. The public space is great. I think there's, there's little that I could argue against it, except I would have to acknowledge, if I lived in the neighborhood to the west, I don't know that I would want these two huge buildings. So I think you did a great job pointing out that the buildings are narrow and pointing out the sun. I think I'm just kind of getting used to the height. Other than that, it's, it's great. And then I just echo some of the other comments, like the parking between the buildings that we're looking at right now. Some of the comments Jimmy made can probably be, be thought of. So I think that's it. I think it's just something new, which is great, it's what we wanted. Applaud your innovation. The height just takes a while to get used to. Which maybe, maybe we'll all get used to it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Navarro?
Thank you. And Mr. Ryan, I apologize if I'm asking questions other people asked, I had to step out. So if I, if I do just, I'd be fine if you say, I already answered that. A brief summary, though, I would appreciate. You don't have to give the full. But thank you. Thank you for presenting tonight, and I appreciate this opportunity to review this plan. The pictures of the towers, how accurately do they represent what you expect to be the finished product?
Let me forgive me, let me get this up for a second. I think the short answer is accurately. Obviously, we're at a very conceptual level, but this is what we'd like them to look like.
You don't have to bring them up, you don't want to. I have it in my mind. I think they're attractive buildings. I had one more question about them. I mean, I actually think they're more, I think they're, like baseball, you talk about something plus, skills are plus plus. I think they're plus plus attractive buildings, so, thank you. The colors, I had a question about the colors. I can't tell, you know, are they varying? Are there varied colors, say, from cream to a brown? Is that how it works?
The palette that we're intending is that it matches the stone on the outside of this building in terms of.
Matches what I'm saying?
The stone on this building.
Okay.
To us, that's a continual theme that you see from here to 50th and France, and then out on France toward Southdale. So we want to mimic that limestone.
I think these are very attractive buildings. I suspect that, and even the height itself, I suspect, the buildings, I think these are going to be, I just lost my word, but notable or standout or landmark. Landmark, that was the word I was looking for. These will be landmark buildings. Obviously, the location of them, I think, is the issue that everyone's struggling with. Changing channels just for a second, the row houses, and this may be a question for staff as much for you. Do the roadhouses, row houses need any kind of lot variance? And because like typically, a lot needs a certain amount of quarter acre or something, and these will be less than that, or because they'll be classified as townhomes, that'd be fine?
That, that would be the answer, yes. It'd be part of a PUD, a townhome development, all one lot with essentially a condo plat. So there would be no issues with lot size for the townhomes.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. And back to the main property in general. The, the city has a consultant architectural field office led by Mick Johnson. Who's very, I'm sure you know him on a first name, you probably even have his, you're reaching the other cellphones, I'm sure. And Mick and his team have put together some comments to this development. Have you had a chance to review those and give your thoughts about those?
We haven't, I have not reviewed his comments relative to our development. He has reviewed our development with us in the past. So I feel like I may know some of them, but I haven't reviewed any of the ones you referenced. And yes, we know each other quite well, we've worked on multiple projects together. Downtown Minneapolis, part of the 2025 vision, all that stuff.
I think, I'm not a developer. And I, what I guess I'd recommend is, instead of having my lack of experience kind of focus on specific things that Architectural Field Office raised, perhaps if and when you come back before us the next time, you could discuss those and say, these are the comments from Mick Johnson. This is what we thought, how we addressed them or did not address them. One of the issues I think that comes with, this is obviously, I mean, I think the most obvious truth that everybody in the room knows tonight is that this is a big change in how things are done in Edina. And obviously, change in itself raises opposition. And sometimes there's reason, there's grounds for that, sometimes there isn't. Sometimes people don't like change. I'm not an expert on every reason why someone would not like a heart change, a height change. I do, I do want to ask you, next time you come back, to think about one issue that I think people may be concerned about. Obviously, you've already raised, you're already thinking through the issues about light and shadow. But I think another reason why people are concerned about change, particularly in properties like this, is what will that do to the value of my property? Not only will I be in shadow part of the day, but they're also worried that, you know, you hear a lot of things. Some people say, oh, well, that is going to, that's gonna be a very valuable piece of property. It's going to raise the value in the neighborhood. And other people say, well, no, that's going to really deteriorate from my neighborhood and lower the value of my property. And I've received feedback both ways about this development, but it's always feedback. And I, I'm not an economist either. I know you guys have really smart people. If next time, if and when you come back next time, if you could bring some information that might address that issue, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can do that.
Obviously, I think next time you come back, I mean, it's probably a question for, again, Planner Teague as much as developers, traffic. I'm sure we'll have a full traffic study and the impact on that.
Correct.
Okay. And then finally, I'd like to return to the issue that I know Commissioner Bennett and perhaps others have raised regarding affordable housing. I understand your response, but obviously, affordable housing is a big issue for Edina. And the fact that we have this policy is something we take pride in. I'm aware of other developments where that has been waived, but there were two distinguishing factors in those developments from the ones that you provided. One, those developments were not on public transit. And two, in those developments, they did make a material contribution to enable future affordable housing to be developed. Have you reviewed that kind of option?
Yeah, I'd say we have just started the process of reviewing, and that's why we're being coy tonight about it. We just don't have an answer today. We're trying to wrap our arms around the issue and-
Do you think by the time you came for a planning commission review of a final plan, you, I would encourage you to have.
Yep.
That's your plan, too, to have a definite proposal? Okay. Those are all my comments. Thank you very much for a great presentation tonight.
Great. Thank you.
I'll just make a few comments, too, before I pass it down to you, because I know you'll probably want to, I think you had some more comments, Steve. But just for my quick comments, again, what everyone's been saying, these are beautiful. The presentation was wonderful. The height is tough. So I also was on the Southdale, Greater Southdale working group. And I'm not sure that this does meet that, what we've been defining as the transition site. So I struggle with that. Also, one of the things that we worked on, too, are kind of where the parks, plazas, open spaces were distributed throughout Southdale. And I know this was kind of one of the areas where we were showing kind of had like some kind of pocket park. So tying on to what some of the other commissioners have been saying, too, I think there's a lot of hardscape here, and I would like to see more green, more public, like, green space, like a park space that people, the whole community could utilize. The, I was going to bring up the Mick Johnson comments, too. I think you should definitely look at that, because those are very important. I think he brought up some really good points. Number one, just not having the tallest building on the outside to at least try to bring that more into the center of the site. I think that's important. One of the things we were looking at was maybe having those townhomes kind of curve around the site. I like what you're trying to do. You know, I think the townhomes are great, but it just, I don't know, it feels like you have a bank, townhomes, big towers. I don't know. I'm not getting all the cohesiveness that much. I don't know if you're putting the townhomes in there to try to be a buffer, but, you know, with that height, I don't know what that's doing. So I would really ask you to look at Mick's comments, because he really is looking at through our eyes. And I think he brought up a lot of really good points. The affordable housing is really important. And I've kind of always been not one of the proponents of even taking the money instead. I think this is a location that where we need to be able to provide affordable housing for people, just to begin transit, shopping, food, jobs, all of that reason. So I'd really have you look closely at that. And I would really want to see that to be a part of this development. Let's see. And I appreciate your, when you bring up the massing, others have done that, too, when they bring up what could happen on the site. And, you know, yeah, you could probably say you'd be allowed that, but we wouldn't have allowed those big masses. So there still would have been pedestrian connections. There still would have been some of the other things. So, but I love what you're doing with the boulevard and all the other pieces, but it's just a little, I don't think it meets that transition. I think it's a little too much. Did you have any more, Steve?
Yeah, just, I just, and I actually, I would share a lot of the chair's comments in terms of how I feel about the project. And actually, again, I commend you on how well you've done in terms of meeting a lot of the principles. And Mick does, you know, his suggestions, I think, are also something I share as well. The only thing I would, specifically, I would say is, when you come back next time, it would be helpful from my standpoint to really have projected energy use, projected impact of this whole complex from kind of, again, carbon energy use standpoint. I mean, you've done a great job with the stormwater. Really helped to show us how this project is trying to, you know, you mentioned the lead standards, or if, speak to that, I think, you know, next time, and really come back with a good estimate of what the kind of carbon budget is for this project. Would be helpful for me.
Great.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lee?
Cherry, just want to have a clarification. Is there a discussion that we will have after this, or is it just, this is it, one way to the, there will be? Because I don't know if we want to just do another pass.
No, right. These are comments for the applicant.
Questions or, okay. All right. Well, I guess I do have some now that if it's okay, we can go through again. Or I'll save it for the discussion. Either way.
Well, are there any more questions for the applicant?
Okay.
I have suggestions.
Okay. I think that's kind of the discussion we're going to be talking.
So just listen to us.
Yeah, listen. We're not done yet.
I'll take that cue to sit down. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's just open up for discussion. Commissioner Lee?
All right. First of all, I just want to say that we really appreciate getting the letters from the residents. There was an expression of a lot of support for this project, many, many residents saying the same thing. So I think that there was some organization on that behalf, at least for the support of the project, which is a good thing. However, I would like to go a little deeper than that. I am concerned about, obviously, the impact on our neighborhoods. I feel that the neighborhoods are the core of Edina. Without the neighborhoods, we will not have the luxury to even talk about the Southdale plan. One of the things that I think I want to bring up here, because we do have representatives from the South, Greater Southdale area work group, that document right now has not been finalized. Is that correct? It's not done. So as far as guiding principles, I am not certain yet whether those are cast in stone. But one of the things I tried to find is what does this plan actually say about the west side of France? And I did not see anything that actually touched that parcel. It more or less said that that should be sort of a crossing point, you know, a great juncture, a way to bring the people on the west side over to the Southdale area. I did not get a sense that, in some ways, it was being guided necessarily by the overall Greater Southdale area plan. So I went back to our visioning document, and we have all just gone through that as a part of the comp plan. So again, I also want to make the point that so much is in flux right now. We have our comp plan update. We had the visioning. We are still trying to nail down the Greater Southdale. I'm just curious whether this is the appropriate time to even be considering looking at a comp plan amendment to revise that. So right now, this piece of, this parcel is zoned for four stories. And historically, I had to go back to, this is what it says in our comp plan, from chapter four, "Building Height Transitions. Taller Buildings," which were defined then, "Generally, Four Stories or Higher Should Step Down to Provide a Height Transition to Surrounding Residential Buildings, Including Buildings Across the Street or Pathway, and to Avoid Excessive Shadowing of Sidewalks, Parks, and Public Spaces." That is our comp plan. My understanding is our comp plan, although it's being updated, it is seen as an update. We are not tossing out the comp plan. We are updating it. And granted, we have struggled with this idea of height, especially in the Southdale area. So, under building heights, it's, this is what is stated in our current comp plan. "The question of building height is particularly significant in a largely developed community, where any new building has the potential to block views or cast shadows on established neighborhoods and land uses. The design guidelines, as well as the recommended building heights in figures," and it quotes these figures, "provide some general guidance for buildings that exceed the typical residential height of 2.5 stories." And so, again, I'm going back to, it is four stories right now. And then the last thing on page 50, "Because of the limited number of locations where tall buildings can be sighted and the need for sensitivity to surrounding areas, the following height maps have been established for those parts of the city with potential for higher density development. These maps were developed to specify the following height measurements." And you can see what's in there. But again, I want to say, there was thought behind that. Maybe it has grown in the context of us becoming a little more urban. I'm not sure to what level, whether it really merits 20 to 24 stories. So I would like to suggest that the applicant actually use the vision in Edina document. That was our strategic framework. And I am just going to take the time to read it, because I think we discuss it too much and we just refer to it. But it was very revealing to me to reread it. So we have, let's see. How did we describe? Okay. Well, and we have several different guiding principles. One of them is called Built-to-Scale Development. "Our community has worked hard to create an innovative and long-term comprehensive development policy that strikes the right balance between renewal and progress, and protection and preservation. We have proactively developed planning procedures and policies and allow the character of our neighborhoods to be preserved and enhanced. Local development reflects the aspirations of, and I want to emphasize, both neighborhood residents and the community as a whole. We, as a group, I don't think we have the power to judge whether we will sacrifice five or six homes' backyard for a certain amount of time due to a 20-story building." But, again, that is my opinion. But as I read this, it is putting emphasis on the neighborhood residents. "Under Strategic Focus Area Issues and Actions, there are eight focus areas. The first was Residential Development Mix. The issue of residential property development has been faced with a number of redevelopment pressures and challenges across numerous areas. Residents strongly favor a continued focus on the single-family housing nature of the city neighborhoods. Two, Issues. Issues identified were residential neighborhoods continue to serve as the defining characteristic of the city, and there is a high desire to protect and enhance such neighborhoods. Residents take a great deal of pride in their homes and express concern about the escalating redevelopment pressures facing some neighborhood areas." So that's an issue. It was identified in the visioning document done just a little over a year ago. Number three, under Commercial Development Mix. Issue, Edina has historically favored large-scale commercial development. Best practice and community desire has moved towards also including smaller-scale models. So under Strategic Actions, under Commercial Development Mix, one, more consideration of scale, and appropriate mixed use could be used in the review of new commercial development proposals, especially to take into account the compounding impact of numerous developments in close proximity and the concerns about this. So we are faced with that right now, and it has been identified. All right. So I would say that's a document we should be sharing with the developer, not strictly just the Southdale Greater Plan. My other point was that, let me see here, this proposal needs to provide affordable housing. There's absolutely, I think, no reason not to. The brownstone mix feels right, and I would like to see a proposal where it looks at developing that as brownstones. I believe that, I disagree with the comment that high quality needs to be associated with height. There are many, many nice condominium, top-rate, high-quality developments that are six stories, five stories, four stories. And I think Edina residents want that. So as much as we have also support for towers, there's also other models of housing that could be explored. So for the affordability, I would expect to see that if it does return, I'd like to see some affordable units accounted for in that. Otherwise, beyond that, I personally would not like to see this return in this format or with this height. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else have, any other comments? Oh, sorry.
I find affordable housing somewhat perplexing. Edina is definitely in the forefront in this. And I think there was this notion made of we need to have affordable housing. And I think that it's a great aspiration for our community to have it. But I don't think there's been a tremendous amount of discussion as to what that should be. So I think we've gotten kind of halfway to that point. We know we want affordable housing. We've kind of identified it as, well, let's just put it in all these rental apartment buildings, without really thinking, what's the outcome we are searching for as a community? Is it to just have affordable housing and pat ourselves on the back and move forward? Or is it, there's a certain outcome we want because of that affordable housing? And sometimes you hear that articulated as, we want people that work for the city or are schoolteachers, families to be able to afford to live in Edina. We talk about doing multi-story, you know, multi-unit buildings. You know, most people raising a family don't want to live in apartments. They want to raise their families in homes or in houses, in single-family homes. So I think that's the challenge. When we kind of frame everything, every time we do a big project, we have to put 10% in. I think we need to challenge ourselves, say, maybe there is a better solution, because I don't think putting, and I've thought this with all of our multi, you know, multi-family projects, that just by putting those units in, there's really addressing, I think, the end goal that everyone's searching for with the affordable housing policy, which is to make Edina affordable for people that want to raise their families. Because those people generally don't want to live in multi-units. That's just my general observation. I think, you know, you've seen, especially in New York City, a lot of struggle with their affordable housing policies. And you've seen some spectacular failures. You've seen some interesting solutions. But I think we need, as we explore this, especially moving now into owner-occupied, how we meet that need. And I thought the solution that came out of Lincoln, of the Lincoln Apartments, made some sense, because, I mean, certainly it wasn't served by mass transit, but it also, you know, that opens the door to maybe be doing some different projects. And that's, so I struggle with that every time we see one of those projects. Are we just putting 10% in affordable housing, saying we've done what we've tried to achieve? Or is there something more we should be doing? And that's, I don't, I don't think this is the right body for that. But I do struggle with affordable housing.
I think that is up to the city to kind of take the lead on that. If we are really supportive of that, I think we heard tonight that we take those monies, but what's the plan? Do we actually get into become the developer role? Do we try to make, cut deals where we can actually build single-family homes at an affordable price? Do we carve out some zoning for townhomes or type of housing? But you raise a very good point.
First of all, I was only going to say, I don't think I ever thought in my life I would ever get so many letters from people excited about a woo-nurf. But I did want to also address the affordable housing. I don't know if we, actually, I do know, we can't decide this issue tonight. I do know that the developer is going to come back with a proposal, but what they think's appropriate for that property. I do think that, both of you are raising big issues that everybody struggles with. It'll be interesting to see what kind of suggestion we have. We have very smart people before us tonight. It'll be very interesting to see what they propose and suggest is appropriate. And then we can have the conversation again at that point.
No Hamilton?
If I could, the 360-foot height is almost three blocks away from the nearest house. That's a long way. Depends on how you define a block. The Minneapolis block's 330 feet. Portland block's 200 feet. What we're looking for in Southdale is a 200-foot block. So that's one. It seemed like to me that the big gift to the community is access to the amenity that this has. And I don't see a real strong connection, or actually a connection. I'm not really sure how I would get from the neighborhoods from 100, moving east to that site. I'm not sure how I would get through it, to it, use it, and then- I'm not sure how I would get through it, to it, use it, and then further through to Southdale. I certainly know how to cross France, but I don't know how to get quite to that site. And I think that would be an interesting thing to further develop.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett.
So, I have a few things that I thought up of as everyone else talked. Still echoing everyone's comments, I think everything that everyone puts out and has discussed is very valid. This is a, it's a challenging thing to wrestle with the trade-offs here. And I guess, to me, I just see more positives than negatives to the, you know, more so the overall community of Edina, but even the surrounding community, not immediately adjacent, but the neighborhood itself. When you create something very beautiful and very attractive and something that people will want to experience and go to, that's going to, one, drive up the value of your home, but also drive up that value of your home to yourself, of like, hey, I live close enough to this to go walk to. There's cool restaurants, and it's actually nice to walk along France Avenue. And that's the changes we want to see on France Avenue. It's funny now, but I'm thinking way into the future, and you can't get there without starting somewhere. So, this is the first block along France that we've seen that looks remotely attractive. And if we keep not asking for that or not allowing someone to pursue that with that in mind, we're not going to ever see it, and no one's going to walk it. So, some of the other things that came up to mind is the other corner, the neglected corner of this project with where the bank is. It feels isolated, as Mick said, and other people. It's just this one-story bank. I'm not saying add a bunch of stories there, but it would be nice to have that, have a similar public, engaging amenity of a corner, kind of like you have on the France and 69th corner. Make it attractive for people in that neighborhood to come to the site. Maybe you're expecting to do it when this block gets cut in half, but you'd be going through residences' backyards, so that won't work. So, make that corner more established, even if you have the bank there. If you can really engage the pedestrian, cyclists will be more so coming along 70th, but they might be coming up Valley View, because they're not going to be coming up France. So, think of how cyclists and pedestrians can get to the site from that corner. People will also be seeing that as they swoop down Valley View there. So, that'll be the way people see this site, more residents than people from out of town that are used to France. A lot of us come down that. So, keep that in mind of how you can really engage people there. Talking about stormwater management, I know you don't have that figured out, but really encourage using it in a creative way that, we've talked about all these sustainable measures, and you mentioned, you know, checking these things off a list, which is unfortunately how things have come. You know, you put design forth, you're going to construct it sustainably. I think we'd really like to really incorporate a learning aspect to how our community functions. And Commissioner Hamilton's brought it up many times. We have a huge commitment to learning in this community with our educational system, but it kind of stops after K through 12. So, how do you, how can you make some of these public amenities, something that people take something from? So, rain gardens have some subtle signage that that's what it is, what is it doing? Have ways that you engage people when you're coming through the site of the creative and strategic measures that you are doing to keep 100% of the stormwater on-site, and letting people kind of learn that that is important and that's taken into account. And back to the sustainability thing, you know, a vertical approach lends itself to a more sustainable living with creating a smaller footprint for the space in which people live. It allows you to do more with the water elsewhere on the site versus big massing of, say, you have a six-story condo thing. It would pretty much fill this whole site. So, that's kind of what I'm wrestling with and everyone else is too, is this height. So, I see the overall benefit, to me, of the height versus the full mass of that site. I believe the community as a whole won't be able to experience it in a more delightful way that it brings. Having the buildings tall along France is really what I saw as your only option, and that's kind of what you have too. I mean, France is a busy road, and it lends itself to that urban kind of lifestyle and approach that we want to see in the Southdale area, of having people walking to places, biking to places. So, having tall buildings along France, even though it's close, the challenge is the neighborhood swoops really close to France here. And, you know, if that height has to come down to appease the neighbors, it's something that you really have to consider. But, having that along France is kind of what I see as the future of that France corridor as some of these buildings are going out, is a lot of the height will be along France and York, and that's where the hustle and bustle will be as these superblocks get divided and people experience. So, again, I applaud kind of what you're doing here with accomplishing the Southdale working group principles, because ultimately, that's what we're trying to do with the comp plan update, too. We have this broad context, we have this broad vision, but there's these small areas, and Southdale area is like a big, small area, but it's our chance to really make the changes that we want to see for our community in these places where development can occur. We're not wanting any changes in the residential areas, but if we can improve the value of the areas around it for people, it's for the better of the surrounding community and the community as a whole. Thanks.
You know, I totally agree with what's activating the street level. I think that is what we've been talking about along. The renderings are beautiful. What it doesn't show is the height, and so I think we are totally in agreement. It's about the height. So, and I think most residents there also are in agreement on that. In general, it's about whether or not, how they're impacted visually, I think, as well as traffic-wise. Traffic is something that we think we will know from a traffic study, but the street level is something that is very useful, can be very, very nice. But again, what is the right height? And right now, I think the comp plan is the comp plan until we make a change.
I guess what I challenge to all of us and everyone here and people listening is, think of these projects in this area as holistically as possible. It's easy, because the height is a very, it's an obvious and visual thing that is easy to stick with. It's something you see, it's something that's going to be etched in your memory. But, what other things this kind of development and others in the future that can bring to this area and help charge this area? Think of those things, but then also just think of, what height are you comfortable with? Right? I think the more you think about it, you're going to have to learn that there are trade-offs in your mind and to the community as a whole. So, I don't know what the magical height is here, but it's definitely taller than I think anyone expected or is comfortable with now. But maybe the more we wrestle with that and the benefits that this kind of development brings to this specific area, maybe that height could be a little higher than we initially thought. Thanks.
I just wanted to add, as a bit of a follow-on to Commissioner Bennett's comments, that, you know, I think sometimes when things are new, the first reaction is, you know, no, because change is hard. But people said the same thing about sidewalks, and I think most people who have sidewalks now really like them. And so, this kind of change can be really positive. It can be positive for the community. It can give people who want to stay in Edina but want to own, but want to, you know, sell their home and move to a condo, they get a new building. So, there's so many positives. So, I think we just approach it with an open mind and realize this is the direction, you know, that Southdale area is going. You know, we have to agree on a height level, and maybe it's not 24 stories, maybe it's lower, but this is the direction, more density. And with it comes the walkability and the vitality and really lively streets that we're looking for.
I think this project just sort of gets into this recurring question of urbanization that we keep hearing so much about. And, you know, just given Edina's sheer proximity to Minneapolis, I think that the question is, in some ways, pretty inevitable, or at the very least is going to continue to be asked, likely with increasing persistence as the years go by. And, in my opinion, I think this is ultimately, I mean, like, the height definitely needs to be consideration, but is a net benefit to the community. And just because it's happening and is new and is taller than what's been here before doesn't mean that it has to be fundamentally un-Edinan or different from what we've done in the past, or undermine what people perceive as the city's character. So, what some other commissioners was mentioning, integrating some of these characteristics and turning this into like a community node that we've talked so much about, be it with an emphasis on education or pedestrians or otherwise, this could be a beneficial project. And I guess I would just challenge everyone here to sort of look at just the nature of not only Edina, but where we are in the proximity to the rest of what's happening in Minnesota. And given that, you know, just keep an open mind.
I'll just add one thing to that. I think it's important to remember, the Met Council has classified the city of Edina as urban in their, I believe it's their 2040 framework. So, that's something we really need to think about going forward, is how, like Commissioner Jones said, this is the future. I mean, we've been classified as urban. We need to think about that going forward. We need to get out of our suburban mindset.
Commissioner Habs.
I just want to recognize that our student commissioners are great. They really are. Thank you for what you guys just said. I mean, it's really great to hear your perspective, and it's testimony to a good job we do here in Edina in education. So, thanks.
For us, or did you hear enough? Oh, okay.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Everyone, for their time tonight. We know this is an exhaustive meeting, and so, thank you. And to the two student commissioners, it's great to hear your perspective there at the end again, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're not done yet. Yep. Are there any chair member comments? Chair, are there any chair or member comments? Should we wait a second?
Ask them to step outside. You know, we still have a meeting to run. Excuse me. If everyone could move their conversation on to the hallway, we still have to finish our meeting. Thank you.
All right, thanks. So, the next item is correspondence and petitions. Do we have any, Carrie? Nope. And then the next one is the chair and member comments. Do we have any chair member comments? I think we kind of covered at the work session.
Just one thing, we have the 44th and France Small Area Plan Working Group, you know, that like eight-term-long initial. The next meeting is this coming Tuesday, in case anyone's interested in participating.
And where's it going to be?
Tuesday, 7:00 PM at the Weber Woods or the Weber Park.
Same place it was last time? Okay. With a key?
That's the key.
The door will be open.
It's in the woods.
Any other comments? Staff comments? Anything been happening, Carrie?
A lot of development projects will be coming forward in the near future. We mentioned at the work session, the Vernon Town Homes behind the Holiday Gas Station, they are back. That will be on your June 14th agenda. The Restoration Hardware just submitted today. Actually, I haven't even looked at them yet, but I don't know. I didn't look, so sorry. My guess is they didn't move it, but, so that will be coming probably at your second meeting in June. We, our resident, or our sustainability coordinator provided a checklist, a suggestion that we provide to developers on how they're going to. So, what I'd like to do is I'll email that out to everybody. Consider it, and we can have a discussion on it probably at our next meeting. It's a pretty extensive list, so it's a, I think it'll be a really good tool moving forward, something that I can hand to a development team when they first come in the door, where we can start to address those issues a little earlier than we do now.
And that came, what was the source of that? Was that one of our work plan items, or was that a different?
Tara Brown is our sustainability coordinator on staff. It's been one of her, one of her charges that she's wanted to do.
Okay, great. And has the council been acting on anything, or that people?
So, the sketch plan for the Trammell Crowe Project did go before the city council a couple of weeks ago. They did make a number of changes from the time that you reviewed. I would characterize them as positive changes. They reduced the number of units, not significantly, about 25, provided a little more space on the southwest corner, kind of provided more a step back on that area. The setbacks are all the same, so it's still very tight to the site. But in general, I think the council was a little more receptive. And again, they were reviewing a plan that was definitely different from what the planning commission had looked at. So, I think all of your comments were taken to heart, and they provided something a little better. I am meeting with them tomorrow. You know, the council suggested some changes, too, so hopefully they've taken it a little further, and we'll see what they come back with. But they have, so they haven't made a formal submittal yet.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. I would take a motion.
Motion, Chair.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.